I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through, and this workshop, through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom through the link below. The speaker portion, I can read it, I'll read it now and read it again later. The School Board will hear public comment, both agenda and non-agenda items at the August, at this, at the School Board meeting to follow. Citizens who would like to can speak up to speak either in person or electronically. That, that was up until noon today. All speakers, the School Board has determined in-person speakers, speakers will be heard before speakers speaking electronically, participating electronically. Agenda and non-agenda item speakers will be heard as set forth in the agenda. Persons signed up to speak in person will be required to remain outside the building, and we'll repeat more about that later. So with that, I will convene this meeting, this School Board Workshop, on this 11th day of August 2020. And I will begin by noting that we have two colleagues participating remotely via Zoom due to illness. And that's, do you want to share, Mrs., Madam Clerk?
We have Kimberly Melnick, who is present on Zoom. Ms. Weems, at the present time, is not.
Okay, so we will keep posted on that, or if she, or if it, if it will be, and we'll check again with the formal meeting. Okay, so that really covers School Board Admin Matters and Reports. We have a lot, but I do want to offer the chance for other colleagues, if there's anything, as long as we honor, honor a timeline, because we do have, again, the, the school reopening is always first and foremost on people's minds, but there's other important matters going on. So now's the chance, if anyone has anything, what they would like to quick share. Okay, seeing none, we will, we will go to Item B, update on the reopening of schools. And it looks like we, we, does Dr. Spence want to start with some comments, or Dr. Bergen?
I think Dr. Bergen is, I just wanted to check with the Board on the agenda. So we have the construction projects update as well tonight. And so just reminder of that from a time check standpoint, in terms of needing to, we want to honor this conversation as well, but we would need about 10 minutes, I think. Tony, is that, is Tony outside? He's here. Does that sound about right, about 10 minutes for that update? Okay. So we always have the opportunity to do that after the formal meeting, and I just want to remind you of that possibility, but just time check with you in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, as well as this part of the workshop too. Yes, Mrs. Anderson?
No, that's all.
Okay.
That's why I suggest that we maybe think about doing that part after the formal meeting.
Okay, welcome, this, Dr. Bergen.
Thank you, Mrs. Rye, and good afternoon to you, to Vice Chair Melnick and the Cloud, to Dr. Spence, and to all of our parents and staff and students who may be watching this presentation from a remote location. My name is Mark Bergen, I'm the Chief of Staff for the School Division. And this afternoon, myself and members of our senior staff, will be providing another update for the Board and our community on our planning efforts for the new school year. I'll begin this presentation by reviewing the current health metrics and summarizing the results of the student registration verification process, as well as that for the staff. I'm then going to introduce Mr. Freeman, who will provide an update of our operational planning efforts. He'll be followed by Dr. Rogers and Dr. Robertson, who collectively will be providing updates on curriculum and instruction, a brief overview of the planning efforts towards the Virtual Learning Center, and an update on professional development for teachers and administrators. They'll then reintroduce me, and I'll conclude the presentation by highlighting our ongoing information series, hashtag VB Safe Together, and open the floor up to your questions. So this is a screenshot that might look familiar to you from when we were last together at the retreat, except this is an updated screenshot that I took yesterday from the Virginia Department of Health website. This particular screenshot indicates percent positivity for the Eastern Region since mid-March. You'll notice that I've added a green line towards the bottom, which marks the threshold for our metric on percent positivity, which is all measures below 5%. And I've added a red line, which marks the threshold of 10% and above for our red zone. Of course, in between the green and the red lines would be our yellow zone of percent positivity, anything between 5 and 10%. So to the golden squiggly line, you'll see that the seven-day rolling average for percent positivity has fluctuated over the past five months. It spiked above 10% in late March and continued through April, and then steadily declined and fell below 5%. I'm sorry, let me repeat that part. It fluctuated over five months. After spiking at 10% in late March and continuing through April, it steadily declined and fell below 5% on June 5, at 4.5%. And then we actually were in the green zone for three weeks, until June 28, until it began to climb again throughout July to an all-time high for July of 12.2% on July 18. Since then, over these past three weeks, the percent positivity has modestly trended down to its current rate of 9.7%, which would put us in the yellow zone as of today, 4% positivity. This is another screenshot from the Virginia Department of Health website, again, from yesterday. And this indicates the number of new cases of COVID-19 in the Eastern Region on a daily basis. So again, there's a green line and a red line. The green line towards the very bottom of the chart, which may be hard to see because it bleeds right into the bottom. It indicates when there are 26 or fewer cases per day on a seven-day rolling average. And the red line indicates a threshold of 265 or more cases per day. Of course, between 26 and 265 would be the yellow zone. As indicated by the golden rod line, on March 30, the seven-day rolling average of new cases was below the green line at 23.6. And it remained relatively flat within the yellow zone for nearly three months, up through July 11. Since July 11, the number of new cases has jumped and remained in the red zone with an all-time high of 483 cases on July 25. Since July 25, there has been a modest decline over these past weeks to the current level of 357, 350.7 cases per day, which of course would put us in the red zone by number of new cases, because it's well above 265. So that's the review of the health metrics. Next, I'd like to share with you the results of the student registration verification, and then I'll review the results of the staff verification. You'll notice that 70% of our families have completed the process when you add together what is in green and in red. 42% of the 70% have selected Option 1 for face-to-face instruction for their children when safer to do so, and 28% have selected Option 2 for virtual learning through the VLC. Regarding the 30% of the families who have not yet completed the process, parents have until midnight tomorrow to make the selection for each of their children. School administrators, counselors, and other school-based staff were busy in their offices today making personal contact with these families, and they will continue to do so tomorrow. After midnight tomorrow, for students whose parents have not made a selection and for whom we were not able to reach by telephone, we will use a default for these children of Option 1 and begin scheduling those students for face-to-face learning when safer to do so. This slide contains a summary of the student registration verification by level, indicating only slight variances between Elementary, Middle, and High, reading from left to right. The variances range from 40 to 43% of parents opting for Option 1, in-person instruction, and a range of 27 to 30% for Option 2, VLC. And the unverified or the not-yet-completed families range from 28 to 31% by level. Moving on to the staff verification, this has been completed as of last week. This slide summarizes the verification totals for all of our school-based instructional staff. As indicated by the blue on this particular graphic, of the 4,493 instructional staff members across the entire division, approximately 14% of them, or 632 teachers, have indicated a preference for assignment to the Virtual Learning Center, with the remaining 86% of the instructional staff, or 3,861 teachers indicating their preference for in-person instruction. So as I did with the student results, let me break this down for you by level. From left to right is Elementary, Middle, and High. You'll notice the small, smallest percentage of the three for virtual assignment is at the Elementary level, with just 11% of the respondents, or 151 teachers, indicating a preference for a position at the Elementary level for the VLC. Compared to 16.5% or 80 teachers at the Middle School level, and 17% or 102 teachers at the High School level indicating a preference for a virtual teaching assignment. And this is one more way to look at this total group. So this is looking at individuals through various endorsements. So beginning on the left, a total of 12.5% or 76 of our special education teachers have expressed a preference for virtual assignment. Compared to, in the middle, 15% or 66 teachers of art, music, and PE. And finally, to the far right, less than 9% or 35 total specialists, which would include individuals such as instructional technology specialists, library media specialists, reading specialists, math coaches. 9% or 35 of them requesting an assignment at the VLC. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, and he's going to provide a brief update on our operational planning efforts. Mr. Freeman?
Before he comes up, I just want to clarify on the one slide about the percentage of parents. So the percentages were right in terms of the percentage of parents who have selected each of those options, and then the 30% remaining out. But if you take out the 30% who have not yet selected an option, what we would tell you is that 60% of our parents have selected Option 1, 60% of those who've made a selection. 60% have selected Option 1, and 40% have selected Option 2. I thought that was important, that you have that additional piece of information. Mr. Freeman?
Thanks, Dr. Spence. Just have a couple of operational updates for you tonight. At the last School Board meeting, I mentioned that we were discussing school bus mitigations with our panel of physicians. Since that time, we've confirmed with the Virginia Department of Health and our panel of physicians that in some cases, it would be an appropriate balance of risk to assign two students per seat. We intend to use this latitude only when needed to ensure that we can transport all of our students who requested transportation to school. When necessary, we will prioritize seating members of the same household together, and then look to keep students from the same bus stop together. All of the same mitigations apply. Windows will be open to the maximum extent practicable. Masks will be required. Good hand hygiene, hand hygiene should be practiced before and after, and buses will be cleaned regularly throughout the day. Once the registration process closes, we will be able to accurately plan our bus routes. It is incredibly important that families complete the registration process, including transportation. To receive transportation, families must request it when registering. We'll provide a full transportation update at the next School Board meeting that will primarily be focused on transportation for this school year. We will, however, also share some other general transportation topics. From a facility standpoint, you may have seen some information being shared about classroom layouts, particularly at the elementary school level. We will be communicating with schools later this week to ensure that schools have the most up-to-date information for how to set up their classrooms, including classrooms that have tables rather than desks. We're still awaiting the final registration data. However, we remain confident that we will be able to set up our classrooms with three feet of distancing, including our classrooms that currently have tables. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rogers to discuss teaching and learning plans.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, I will provide you with an update on the Department of Teaching and Learning's plan for opening in the fall. You'll remember this slide from your previous meeting as it outlines the key aspects of our teaching and learning plan for the 2020-21 school year, and the key differences from our emergency learning plan. At your last meeting, you were provided with detailed information on the two options related to school opening. We shared a draft schedule, draft schedules, and provided information on what virtual learning would look like for the 2020-21 school year. And I'd like to reiterate two of the most significant differences for next year. The first of which, of course, is attendance and participation. Attendance in virtual learning during the 2020-21 school year is compulsory, and participation in synchronous and asynchronous activities is required. Attendance will be taken during synchronous lessons with the teacher, and participation will be monitored by the teacher during synchronous lessons and through student interaction within Schoology. Flexibility, of course, will be provided for students who, for whatever reason, are not available to participate when synchronous instruction is occurring. We will also be providing guidance and professional learning to teachers on how to record their synchronous lessons when appropriate to upload into Schoology for students who are not able to participate when synchronous instruction is provided. Additionally, we are also working with students and families, we're also working to provide students and families with some support in the evening with live synchronous support. Next is assessment and grading. Unlike the emergency learning plan in spring of 2020, both virtual learning and in-person learning will be assessed and graded. Teachers will assess student readiness in September based on diagnostic and formative assessments. We will support staff with identifying where students are academically and create academic plans to support all of our students. Now I'd like to share a little bit about how we're being diligently, how we're diligently preparing for 100% virtual learning. So in addition to adjusting curriculum and pacing that we shared with you in your last few meetings, if you remember, every Monday, and we call them moving Mondays, from spring break up until the end of the school year was spent on providing professional learning opportunities to build teacher knowledge and understanding of our digital tools and strategies in order for them to be successful in a virtual environment. In this past April, our instructional technology coordinators began to train every school's instructional technology specialist, or ITSs, on the best platforms for connecting with students while teaching remotely. So they worked on three platforms, of course Zoom and Google Meet, which we have access to. And then we also have the Big Blue Button, which is a third-party application that our teachers have access through Schoology. We also provided professional learning on using other synchronous recording tools that our teachers can use to provide engaging assignments asynchronously for our students. And of course, during the summer, and all throughout this summer, we've been providing essential training for our teachers based on their specific teaching assignments in order to prepare them for this coming school year. So some examples of this include providing opportunities for them to know about the curriculum updates that are based on the changes that we've made as a result of our extended closure, best practices for assessing students within the virtual learning environment, and of course, just successful instructional practices in general. So our new teachers, of course, all of our new teachers will receive mandatory training on the use of Schoology. And the Department of School Leadership and the Department of Teaching and Learning, we're partnering on an essential session for all of our staff to be trained on successful strategies and expectations for teaching and leading virtually. We're also providing our instructional coaches, and that's our gifted resource teachers, our math and literacy specialists, our ITSs, and our library media specialists, on training for coaching, student-centered coaching, with an emphasis on virtual coaching to better be able to provide support to our classroom teachers in a virtual environment. Our ITSs began their training last week, and many of the topics that they explored are very specific to the strategies to support teachers with teaching virtually. Lastly, we've also used the summer months to provide essential training for our administrators, and that training is focused on instructional best practices, tips and tricks to use with Schoology, as well as social-emotional learning so that they are better able to assist teachers in navigating the start of the school year. I want to talk a little bit about the student and staff support. So we continue to plan and provide support to our students to be successful. And for example, with our students with disabilities, the case manager will be a special education teacher from the student's home school or school of attendance if they are assigned to another building for a program or the services. And that will happen even during transitions to temporary virtual instruction. So for option number two, the case manager will be a special education teacher that's assigned to the VLC, which may or may not be a teacher from that student's home school or school of attendance. And of course, we will make every effort to assign students to a case manager from their home school. However, it's important to note that this will be dependent upon student enrollment preferences, as well as staff preferences. It's also important to note that if it's a case manager from the home school or the school in attendance, that he or she may not be the case manager that the student had the previous year. And regarding high school courses, our school counselors continue to support our students and families in answering questions about courses and electives with the schedule. And I certainly want to keep encouraging our families to do so. And as has been shared previously, our goal is to offer as many elective classes as possible in both Options 1 and 2. And availability of courses, of course, are based on several factors, to include student enrollment, availability of staff, and our ability to implement guidelines as provided by the CDC and the Virginia Beach Public Health Department. So for parent support, we continue to take feedback that's received from families daily, as well as staff. And we will be creating resources to support our parents and families to better be able to successfully navigate and assist their children with virtual learning. We are discussing the possibility of creating a Schoology course for our parents to be able to take that will provide them with a learning experience with Schoology to better be able to collaborate with their teachers and to support their children at home. We also continue to look for opportunities to share accurate information with our families. So for example, as you know, yesterday, we held three small community information sessions to be able to assist them in answering questions that, and provide information on how we are supporting our students with disabilities, our students who have been identified as gifted learners, and our students who are enrolled in our academies, an advanced technology center, and the technical center. And speaking of technology, regarding technology access, we continue to remain committed to working to ensure that our students have access to technology as well as internet. All of our students will be provided with a Chromebook. As you know, our pre-K and kindergarten students will be provided with an iPad. Families still have the ability to request Wi-Fi hotspots if needed, and information on how to request a hotspot can be found on our customer support site or by calling the number 263-1111 for assistance. And I will now turn the discussion to Dr. Robertson.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. In the last board meeting, I shared that you would be receiving more information about the Virtual Learning Center and how it will operate to support families, staff, and schools. The next few slides will give you an overview of the Virtual Learning Center, an innovative concept to support learning. Families that choose Option 2 will learn in a virtual setting for the first semester or term of the year. Staff that expressed a preference to teach or work in Option 2 and are selected based on student need to teach or work in Option 2 will also remain in the will also remain in the virtual setting for the first semester or term. And this virtual setting is referred to as the Virtual Learning Center. Both staff and students, regardless of whether they are in option one or option two, will have similar expectations as they relate to teaching and learning. To assist in developing this novel approach to supporting student and staff needs as well as teaching and learning, I have formed an executive leadership team, and I am pleased to announce this leadership team. That includes Dr. Kip Rogers, Chief Academic Officer, our elementary program director, retired Principal Extraordinaire Barbara Sessoms. To support our secondary 612 program, retired extraordinary Principal Joe Burnsworth. And our central support team were supported by Ronnie Myers-Dobbins, the Director of the Office for Programs for Exceptional Children, Laura Silverman, the Director of Title I, Chris Bruno, Coordinator in the Department of Technology, and Bernard Platt, the Director of Human Resources. This group will meet regularly to plan, monitor, and oversee VLC staff, students, and programs. A key objective of option two is to keep as many students and teachers connected to their home school as possible. As we approach roughly 40% of our families choosing option two, with a lesser percentage of staff preferring option two, we will exhaust all options to best meet the needs of as many students and staff as is possible. We also recognize that invariably we will have both students and staff that may be learning alongside students from other schools or be teaching students from other schools. When this occurs and to ensure these students and staff remain connected at the home, to their home school, we will have students concurrently enrolled at the home school, and we will develop guidelines, expectations, and avenues for both groups to maintain their connections. For example, a student in the VLC can play athletics, participate in clubs and activities, or run for office at their home school. Staff can request when necessary to report to their home school to access resources or participate as a club sponsor, coach, or attend meetings. In creating a schedule for students in option one, we must lower class sizes to a number that will meet physical distancing guidelines. This one constraint will result in classes in option two, whether they are home-based or cloud-based, to be larger as no additional staff are budgeted to schools. A trade-off, if you will, for having larger class sizes in option two is that these teachers will not have daily duties and other responsibilities, like eating lunch and breakfast with your students, that come with providing in-person instruction. Over the next two-plus weeks, all schools and the VLC leadership team will be feverishly working to create and schedule all students and staff. This process usually occurs over a three-to-four-month period, yet we have 10 days to do it. And under these circumstances. Schools have been preparing and training, which will help them meet this ambitious timeline, as failure in this option is not, or failure in this task is not an option. I trust our school leaders and believe they are doing their absolute best to put together what I characterize as a thousand-piece puzzle they've never seen before, in the dark, with 50 pieces missing. And I'm hopeful, very hopeful, that families and staff will support us in this work over the next couple of weeks. In May, the Department of School Leadership surveyed school-based administrators to assess their learning from the emergency learning plan to then determine what professional learning would be most needed this summer. We then completely revamped the planned professional learning and developed a new summer leadership series that is noted on this slide. In particular, we wanted to ensure administrator professional learning was aligned to teacher professional learning as well as in areas to support leadership in this new environment. The central sessions are noted on this slide, and I want to note as an example that in the health, safety, and operational procedures training, staff are given guidance on health and safety operations, such as no large group gatherings, how to set up your classroom, and use of PPE. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Bergen.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Board members, last Thursday, we launched a five-part series, hashtag VB safe together. And the second installment of this five-part series is scheduled for this Thursday. The overall purpose of this campaign is to allow us to promote safety, compassion, and empathy within our VB CPS community. Our Department of Communications and Community Engagement is encouraging everyone to submit pictures via the hashtag of yourself and your family wearing your face coverings while working, volunteering, and giving back to the community. Also, prior to each of these sessions, we are inviting the community to submit questions related to the division's planning efforts for the new school year so that we can address them during the session. Each of these sessions is being hosted by different members of our central support team and will focus on a different aspect of our reopening plan, as you see outlined on this slide. So again, our second session will be this Thursday evening from six to seven and will be led by our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Dr. Lakish Parrot. The session will focus on being safe in our global community. We invite all of you to join us and together to be safe. And with that, our chief officers and our central support team stands ready to begin addressing some of your questions about our planning efforts.
And Dr. Bergen, does the staff have any preference on whether we, or just take, we'll just take the, start out taking the questions and whatever staff member wants to step forward or to do it and work? We'll try it that way, I guess, first?
Yeah.
So it looks like we're starting with Mr. Edwards.
The session last Thursday, was there any information that was provided to the public in our discussions within the staff that would be helpful for us to hear?
I do, I mean, I think there was, it was an hour and we answered a lot of questions. I think that link was shared with the board, and it's also available on our division website, I think on our YouTube channel, is that correct? And so, yes, we would encourage folks who weren't able to attend that session to go back and review the session, and each of the sessions will be recorded and put up on the division's YouTube channel.
For those of us who plead guilty to have not seen it, is there anything that we, would be helpful for us to know now, any?
The parent connections will be recorded as well and put up, they're not up yet. So just as a reminder, some of the delay in getting those up to our YouTube sites is that we have to make them ADA compliant, which means they have to have subtitles, so that takes a little bit of time.
Mrs. Ricks.
Okay, um, this is concerning the operational updates, I guess, Mr. Freeman. So a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if it was during our meeting, school board meeting, or it was our workshop, but I specifically asked about desk, okay? And we were told that you thought you had enough desk for everybody, and now I am not seeing that. I'm seeing from teachers that there aren't, and there are even, there's tables that are set up, and we were given, we were sent a, an email today of different configurations to set up these tables, and these kids are not being socially distanced enough, so I'm concerned about that. Can you help me with it?
Yes, so I, I think what was shared was never a, that we were going to replace all of our tables with desks, but we had enough furniture within the vision to be able to maintain the three feet of distancing that's required for social distancing. There's nothing required about having a desk to maintain three feet of distancing. So that was the intention behind the response to your questions.
Okay, um, anyway, I've got, I've got this, the one with the pictures that are showing that for the different scenarios to give different ideas, okay? The other thing that I want to ask about this is the PPE. As we've been reading and getting information, one of the things that we got information or have seen is, you know, Facebook and other publications and communications, is like, for instance, Henrico. They decided, from what I understand, that not getting enough of the PPE and it being on backwater, it was going to take too long to get it, to be able to start their year or even get into the ver, the year face-to-face, so they can, that was one of the things that helped them decide on staying virtual for the first nine weeks. Do we have all of this PPE, all the mask, the hand sanitizer, the cleaning, do we have all this? Are we still waiting for it? And I mean, we're reading about the Plexiglas, it's in short supply now? Because they started back with Plexiglas with the supermarkets and places of that nature was full, you know, so they don't even have enough Plexiglas to, there's a short supply in the country. So that's my concern.
Yes.
Another one of my concerns.
Understand your concern, I'll have to get, so Mr. Steve Lepac is assigned the PPE, that he can talk about where the ordering class is at. So Farrell, I think, can cover the PPE part of it.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
We have ordered all the PPE, which is adult mask for employees. We're ordering three per employee. They need, they need the CDC specs. We're also ordering masks for students. They will be sized for small and, and then larger size students. We've ordered all the cleaning and other kinds of supplies like that. And all of the things that we've ordered will be coming in toward the end of August. So if those things will be in certainly before we have students and we have staff coming into the classroom. We've been assured by the suppliers that we're ordering from that they can, they can deliver and they can meet our request.
Okay, and that includes the Plexiglas and those kind of things that you're going to need?
We've ordered, in terms of Plexiglas, we've ordered some shields, but the Plexiglas is, that's something that Mr. Freeman would have to deal with. If you're talking about Plexiglas that might be in a common area where some, I don't, I can't answer that one, but I think that one's probably okay.
So you have been assured by your vendors, you're going to get all of this PPE?
Yes, we have.
Okay, um. I, I have some other questions of some others, I don't want to, you know, take all of it, so it's for other people, but if you want to go ahead and let other people?
We'll come back, thank you, Mrs. Ricks. Mrs. Anderson.
So, um, Mr. Freeman, has there been any thought on the tables that we have to use in installing Plexiglas? I've seen pictures on, on, you know, on, on the internet where they've created sort of an X in Plexiglas that would distance students that have to sit at tables. And again, you know, I know that that, that's expensive, but it is a way of distancing students without having to order desks. We could be able to do that if we utilize the tables that we already have. I don't know if we can get the Plexiglas for that, or if you, we want to speak to that just a little bit, the Plexiglas thing?
Yeah, so the requirement is to be able to get three feet of distancing, where we can get three feet of distancing, regardless of what the furniture is, we're going to get three feet of distancing. If we find ourselves in a position where we can't get three feet of distancing what we have, you look outside that classroom within the same school. Is there something within that school that can be moved around or adjusted? If it's not within that school, do we have it somewhere else in another school within the division to be able to move it over? So lots of options, circling back to the Plexiglas question. If that is where we get to from a mitigation standpoint, we will do what it takes to be able to get to appropriate distancing. But the goal is to get to three feet of distancing as a structure for our classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
And we, just to follow on steps, so there are some things, and we experienced this during ESY over the summertime, where you need a little bit more close face-to-face instruction, and we've already, in those instances, put Plexiglas barriers in place to be able to further support the environment.
Yeah, because I, I was concerned originally about reading groups, for example. That's a very good example where you really need a little closer instruction. And I, I envisioned reading groups possibly, you know, having a reading table with Plexiglas separating people, but you could still see and talk and, that's just a suggestion. So my next question has to do with training of teachers. Dr. Rogers? Have these training sessions already started? Because I'm hearing from teachers that they have not, and several teachers have indicated to me that they're anxious to get started with training sessions because they would need time to, you know, utilize it, think about it.
So yes, our teachers have been training all summer on the central training, that has not stopped. So especially at the elementary level, we do have, maybe speaking of like the nuts and bolts and how to, what do's and don'ts in the virtual environment, that essential session that I spoke of that Dr. Roberts and I, our teams are partnering with. We do have plans to offer that to our staff at our Digital Learning Summer Summit, which will take place on the 18th of this month. And then it's also going to be mandatory on September 1st, so they will get that mandatory training. But in terms of content and curriculum, they've been getting that all summer.
Okay, alright. And then while you're up there, just real quick, I'm concerned about parents who work would, so asynchronous, asynchronous learning activities being taped so that working parents have an opportunity to do that with their children when they get home. Is that available for just about everything that's happening throughout the day, even synchronous being taped so that in case a child misses it, they could at least watch it later on?
So the team is planning for accommodating those students who would not be able to participate in the scheduled synchronous learning activities. Some synchronous learning activities will be, make sense to be recorded, others of them may not, but we are training, planning to train our teachers on how to record synchronous lessons as appropriate and make them available for those families. We are also planning opportunities for the evening for those families who can, for whatever reason, have their children participate in the synchronous learning activities at the scheduled time. And we're still trying to work out what that looks like and which staff will be able to work with that, but we are very cognizant that we do have some families that just won't be able to have their children participate at that scheduled time with those synchronous learning activities, and we will certainly make them available to those families as appropriate.
Okay, I'll relinquish now and come back later.
Madam Chair. Ms. Melnick does have her hand raised on the Zoom.
This is a question for Dr. Bergen.
Ms. Melnick, we have Ms. Melton first, you will be called momentarily.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you called my name.
Yes, Dr. Bergen, could you go back to the student registration verification results? And I'm interested in that 30% that you mentioned had not committed or had not registered. And my question to that is, is that, did you mention, was that high school or middle school or just high school, or all students?
It was all three levels, I can go, I can, I think I can read it off of my.
And while you're doing it, I will not, just for my, again, do you go through the protocol of what you're going to do and how you're going to proceed with those 30 percentages that have not committed yet?
Yes, ma'am, it's 31% at elementary, 28 at middle, and 30 at high school, so roughly three out of 10 kids. So roughly three out of ten kids. Anecdotally, it was fifty percent hadn't responded, what was that, a couple of days back? Yeah, we had a big bounce, you know, in the last twenty-four hours. We expect another bounce. Our staff, our counselors are back in the buildings this week. The protocol you're asking about, we have counselors in the buildings, we have principals and assistant principals, we have office staff. We are ringing telephones. So we're reaching out to parents who are holding out because they still have questions or concerns. We did have, we were well-attended on the Monday night series for gifted and academy programs. We had eleven hundred people participate. Many of those folks were listening for an explanation or a question to be answered and then, you know, turned on their computer and did their verification. So we are confident, Dr. Robertson is confident, that with the amount of people we have working the phones, that we're going to, our goal is a hundred percent. So that every student's parent will make the choice for themselves. They have till midnight Wednesday to do so. So we'll continue to phone them tomorrow if they haven't completed it by tonight.
I appreciate you saying that one hundred percent is your goal for these students because you know where my concern lie? And those law students and those students that we are not, the engagement and making access. So with that said, I know you, along with the Counsel Department, are going to do it robust, calling out to them because I am concerned about it as well. And saying, could you give me those numbers again, you said high school is what now? Thirty, what percentage?
It's on your handout, Ms. Felton. So I'll have to go back to my handout.
I'll pull it, if it's on my handout, I can pull this.
I think you can just, I mean, it's roughly thirty percent by level. It doesn't fluctuate by more than one or two percent.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And my second question, and I'll be through. Dr. Rogers spoke on, you, you're talking about attendance. Being calculated of students, it's going to be, that's a hundred percent what they need to do. But when we're going to record, if you're going to record the lessons or whatever, how will the attendance be recorded? How will they know, will it be on the same metrics as coming in live?
So no, ma'am, we'll have to have maximum flexibility when it comes to taking attendance. So of course, that's one mechanism with which we can take attendance is having students physically present during the synchronous learning activity. The expectation is that our students engage in a learning, which could be synchronously and/or asynchronously as well. So for example, if a teacher has assigned a student an assignment in Schoology and they weren't able to participate in the synchronous learning activity that day between ten and ten-thirty, then the expectation is that that student engage in Schoology at a time that's most convenient for them. And then, of course, we are certainly working to try to make arrangements to engage with those students who did not have an opportunity to engage in the synchronous learning opportunity at a later time than during the day. So there'll be multiple opportunities that we can capture whether a student has been engaged in a learning. So the state has provided us guidance and verbiage to help identify what attendance really is. It's meaning, being, being present for the learning in different ways. But we have to be able to account for it either synchronously and/or asynchronously.
Okay, thank you, I'll come back later on next question, thank you so much.
So, Mrs. Melnick, we have two colleagues ahead of you, so just hang in there with us, okay? Mrs. Owens?
Great, thank you. The first question is in regards to the PPE, so I guess maybe Mr. Freeman or Farrell? The, you mentioned that there are three masks per teacher currently being ordered. Three masks per year per teacher? And then, my other question was, can you tell me about the amount of masks being purchased per student? And how we're dealing with that? Are we doing three masks per student per year? And if they lose those, then parents provide them? And if they don't have them, then, if we can talk a little bit more about what that looks like? Because we know how the school supplies and other items are constantly lost and I'm just trying to find out what we're doing for the strap broke, the whatever. You're in school, are we going to give them another one? Do we have them to give?
We will also have an inventory of disposable masks. And they will be available on buses. For example, if a student happens to come and try to get on a bus without a mask, they'll be provided a mask. So there will be surplus masks, there'll also be surplus masks at the schools, disposable masks also. And we will have extra masks beyond the three per person also to replace some masks. These masks can be washed up to fifty times. So each of the three masks, that's a hundred and fifty times that they could be used. In addition to disposable masks, if somebody loses his mask or needs a mask on the day that they, they forgot to bring them. So we're trying to think of everything we could do to make sure that we've got everything covered.
I guess, kind of on that same vein, and I appreciate all of the work that I see is going into this, it's overwhelming. If we get to a point where we are realizing that for whatever reason our supplies have not reached us in the timeframe that we expected them to. Obviously, we're saying that the supplier has said that they're going to get them to us. But anybody who's ordered things knows that sometimes it can, sometimes it can't, things happen. Do we have a, a certain amount already available to us? Or are we looking at the possibility of having to do a stop closer to our actual face-to-face since we are not going to say that we have everything in place before we, we move forward? That we're expecting to fill in some of these gaps as we go?
The supplies that we're talking about, and specifically the mask, and there are some transparent face shields also that maybe some other nurses and other folks like that would have to have. Those to come in right after the twentieth, between, I think, the twentieth and twenty-fifth of August. If we find that there's some delay, there were about four vendors that we have a relationship with who've been dependable in the past. And those would always be backup. The issue with the backup like that and ordering and insisting on a quicker turnaround is we will have to pay more for the mask. So, but that's our backup plan. And that's the best we can do right now.
Thank you. I guess the next question I have maybe is for Kip, it's about program.
If we may, since we would be swishing staff anyway, we'll get everybody their first round.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you, transportation question. I know several parents were signing up and saying, I might not need transportation, but I'm going to go ahead and sign up for it just in case. I anticipate that once schedules come out and parents, you know, kind of figure out their schedules with this new plan, if they change their mind and don't need transportation, what's the process? Do they contact their school? Do they contact the Department of Transportation?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that very clear in an update that we send out to families that have a path to change their, to be able to essentially give that seat back.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful, because I know, you know, if there, I know there are a lot of families out there who are willing to take their kids to school if, you know, if someone else needs it more. So I, I would highly suggest putting that request out there.
Thank you for that, because we fully understand that some may have put it in there just, just in case. And we really want to get to who really needs the transportation, that'll allow us to work most efficiently.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Dr. Rogers, I have a question regarding the attendance piece again. I know that you said that there will be flexibility provided on attendance, and I know you're going to be doing that. But my concern is, how is attendance going to be logged? For example, we have a parent who has a middle school student who's at home during the day by themselves who are supposed to be on, logged onto their class, but perhaps they aren't. The parent doesn't know, is that going to be logged in Schoology? Is the parent going to get a notification? How are we going to be tracking that?
Okay, I'll defer to Dr. Roberts. So I think I might be able to answer that. I'm working with Mr. Den right now on, on creating the best process to share with families and students and teachers in terms of how to take attendance because there's so many possibilities for a student to demonstrate they're engaged in learning beyond being in that synchronous session. So we want to create a process where it's understandable for parents, it's understandable for students, it's understandable for teachers, that still gives us the information we need to then demonstrate.